To the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our September 1st Select Board meeting. And Heather and Lee, you can hear us okay. We've got two members of the Select Board attending by Zoom.
We can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear. The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our August 18th meeting. Would someone please make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve our minutes from the previous meeting.
A second motion.
Please the motion, please the second. Any corrections, changes, discussion, any comments, questions, concerns about the minutes?
I have none.
None?
I had one. I had one. On page one, line 42 and 43, I had indicated that the policies would be ready for adoption by September 1st, not October 1st.
Ah, good.
And that's critical because they're required before we move into the building, so those need to reflect properly.
Anything else, anybody? All those in favor of approving the minutes with the corrections stated, please say aye.
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 Everybody opposed? All set with that? Citizens' comments, if there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? Excellent. Move on to old business. Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
Sure, there's not a ton of stuff, but just I wanted to let everybody know, I don't know if you've seen them, but Chester Townscape worked with Payne Junker to have new railings fabricated for the gazebo on the green. And we hired Steve Vertifell to repaint the gazebo, so it looks fabulous. Just wanted to thank Chester Townscape publicly, they raised the money for that. The police policies, well first I should say, public safety building. So fire and ambulance have officially moved in. Police is in the midst of that, they'll be in tomorrow. We were hoping to have had, you know, a big move-in moment. With the delays and the way things worked, it just didn't work. We just, people needed to get in, we got in. There will be an open house for the public, Sunday, September 26th at 2:00. So there will be more to come on what we will be doing, but fire department's gonna do a barbecue. There will be some events, tours of the building, et cetera. So, just giving you an update on that.
I can add to that?
Yeah.
The flags are up and they were donated by the American Legion Auxiliary, so Matt and I put them up there so it would, it just didn't look right without the flags.
Without the flags, yeah.
Once you're in your home.
Yeah, yeah, so the flags are up.
And then, so in conjunction with that, police department policies are all updated. This is them, this is why they're not done in a week. And the, all the policies, new policies required for the building, processing, Sally Port, fingerprinting and holding cell have all been added. Training has been done. Acknowledgements have been received, that was all completed, required before we operate the building. So that is, that is all in place.
That's quite a folder of procedures.
It is, it is, and they are all updated with VLCT, most modern VLCT policies as required, so.
Because I know there was some concern about the new building having some facilities that our old one didn't, to make sure they were addressed.
Correct.
Training's been taken care of, it's all been done.
That was all completed this week, everything was completed yesterday, so that it would be in effect by September 2nd. We cannot operate that building without the, specifically the holding cell and the Sally Port policies in place. So those are now in place. And that's all I had for old business.
Anyone else in the old business? Lee, Heather, anything?
Quick question, the bridge update for the trail behind the Academy Building.
Sure, so Kirby heard back today, so beams are in, most of the bridge decking has been completed. I think they've built about 80 to 90 feet of bridge decking is ready. And Kirby has been waiting for her back today from the company that will be the piles for the bridge. We don't want abutments in the wetlands or in the floodway area. So that's actually being done with piles and driven. So it's less impact, so the guy got back to them today, they can do those in two weeks. So once those go in, the bridge goes in, we'll be good to go.
Wow.
So by the end of September, it will be in place.
That's great, that's great news, you take one of the, one of the items off your long list.
Yes, several things are gonna get checked off this year, even if I die doing it.
I've already asked, nobody else has any old business, so we'll head on from there. Next item on our agenda is Wheels in the Field. And Lee Whiting is here to address a request that he has from the town for use, it's some town property. I believe this is like your fifth year that you've been doing this, Lee? And can you give us a little short synopsis of what's going on and your request from the town? Can you grab over to the microphone? That way the folks in our electronic world will be able to hear you.
So I'm not sure if this is our fourth or fifth year, but anyhow, it's continued to grow every year. We're sold out already. This year, we have again rented the Green Mountain softball field for camping and for a tent for food. We're still battling with COVID restrictions and so on and so forth, so we're gonna stay, stay with the same courses last year. We're sold out, we've got approximately 125 riders, and then we've got all of our sweeps and marshals and so on and so forth in place, so it'll probably top out. 140, something like that with staff. We would like to utilize again the Pinnacle property for the historic Scottish trials. We'd like to utilize some of the Chester State Forest. We still need to pre-ride that to make sure that it's not damaged from all the amount of rain we've had this summer. But obviously, we wanna go in and be able to utilize that if it's dry enough to do so. The other thing that we'd like to do is at 4:00, we've got the BMW North American Ambassador Stunt Rider, and we would like to close down at approximately 4:00 for 20 minutes, Lover's Lane, in order to do the stunt show. And that would be from basically where the skating rink is, down to where the entrance is for the Little League ballfields.
We just had that repaved for the event for you.
Yes, perfect, yeah, exactly.
It's nice and smooth, it's brand new.
Also, we just wanted to make you guys aware, of course, if there was ever any type of an emergency or whatever, we could shut that thing down in two seconds and have the access fully open.
So this is basically the same request that you've had last year?
Yeah, I'm not asking for any additional services from what I've done in the past.
I, you know, it seems like it's getting more and more popular every year. There's more and more folks and more and more folks are talking about it and going to see what's happening.
One other thing I forgot to include is also that we're gonna continue to have our Porsche show across from the green, where the monument area is in front of the Hearst House, same thing.
Well, that's great. So we need a motion to, and you could work out the details as far as the exact times and locations and stuff with Julie, as far as that goes.
And I'll work with Chief Cloud as far as, you know, the shutting down of the road or whatever for the stunt show.
So I would entertain a motion to allow the Wheels in the Fields, the use of the town property, as Lee Whiting was mentioning, for the dates of, what are the exact dates?
First, second and third. Friday, we'll be setting up the Pinnacle for the, for the trials. That'll take place on Saturday afternoon, stunt show at 4:00. Everybody will be out of here by noon time or so on Sunday.
So for October 1st, 2nd, 1st, 2nd and 3rd, Friday, Saturday and Sunday? Someone's gonna...
I'll make the motion as stated.
I'll second.
Jeff's the motion and Lee Dakin's the second. Any further discussion on this, any questions or concerns? I'd just like to mention, thank you for all you do for that, for that, for the, for the organization, that the Wheels in the Field event. And I imagine it's a lot of work between you and your committee, whoever else does all this background work to make it all happen. And it's a great attraction for the town, there's some really cool bikes.
Oh, we appreciate it.
It's a really great event. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It's all good, Lee, thank you.
Cool, thanks so much, everybody.
While Lee is here, can I go back to old business?
You're here now, Lee.
So let's just, let's just, so everything is coming together really nicely for the Fall Festival. I should've talked about this under old business, I'm sorry. Lot of really exciting things, a lot of really great musical performers. We have Jamie Lee Thurston, who's gonna, who is a big draw, it's a big name, is gonna be here Sunday from 12 to 2. Again, free concerts, asking for, it'd be by donation, but there's no cost to get in. Lot of really good name entertainment, whole agricultural component added, outside dining cafe, little area added.
What, I looked at that event and the Rotaries did a great job in the past, but we looked at it and wanted to enhance it and bring a little bit more to the town. So we added an agricultural element behind the Academy Building with everything from tractor displays to sheep herding demonstrations and all kinds of Farm Olympics, we're calling it, for the kids. We've got everything from pumpkin bowling to hay bale maize, to potato sack races, find the needle in the haystack. We've got the Pink Fire Truck coming, which is a national program that supports people that have had, you know, cancer and issues and so on. We've got that coming. We've got, like I said, the tractor display. There'll be apple cider demonstrations, there'll be all kinds of stuff that's agricultural themed and behind the Academy Building. Behind the Fullerton, on the tennis courts back there, full-blown music stage. We've hired a sound company to come in from Albany with mixing boards and we brought in a generator to make clean power, to, to run all the audio equipment. And then we're completely sold out on the green. The other thing that we did this year was we're gonna take the Academy Building front lawn and we're making that into a big, huge food court with tables, with market umbrellas and picnic, picket fences, the whole nine yards, so it's gonna be a great event, looking forward to it.
That's pretty exciting.
Yes, it's gonna be...
Ton of work on that, phew, hours and hours and hours.
It's really thankful that your group took this up, because it's been, I don't know, 35, 40 years that this has been going on.
Yeah.
And it's a tradition that's been here for a long time, and it means a lot to the town, to the publicity of the town, the character, I mean, everything associated with this town. A lot of people know about this event from all over the place. And the fact that you've, you're and your group have taken this on and done what you've done is really well appreciated.
Well, thanks for your support. The banner will be going up, coming into town, we'll be putting up all the real estate type signboards coming in from 35, from 103, 11, all that stuff's gonna be up before this weekend. We wanna try to get the information out as quickly as possible for the traffic this weekend with the holiday, so.
Two weeks away.
Two weeks away?
Thanks a lot, everybody, appreciate it.
Hope for good weather.
Thank you.
That's right, thanks, Lee.
Thanks, Lee. So the next item on our agenda is the Green Mountain Board Director Appointment. Well, actually, it's not an appointment. So this process changed back, I believe, in 2017 with some...
When the schools, when the unified, when the school district unified.
So this is the Green Mountain Unified Board that we're gonna be talking about, and they had a, they have an opening in, for a representative from Chester. And I think Jeannie Wade was the lady that was in that position before, but she's taken a job with the elementary school, so she can't be on the board and also on the, have her job with the elementary school, so there's an opening there. So the state statute says, I had it somewhere. Well, it says quite a bit, there's a whole paragraph on it. But the Select Board is involved with this. And the way I've read it, and the way I think it's been interpreted is that we work in cooperation with the Board itself and the Superintendent's Office. And the candidates, I guess they show an interest, they have to show an interest with the Select Board and then with the, with the Green Mountain Board also. And it is up to us how, how we wanna address this. Now, the wording that I've got out of it seems like that we consider the candidates and then give an opinion to the school board. And I, and I believe we can, let me get back to this. Tell the school board that all the candidates are acceptable, that none are, or that a particular one would be. Those are some of the options on how we could do this. We could go and interview candidates and go that route also, though I don't think it's, that would be a wise choice, because I think it's more important that the board that's gonna be making the appointment do the interviews or the more serious work to it. The school board doesn't have to accept any decision that we make or recommendation. They can consider it, but they're not bound by it. So basically, it comes down to, and you can help me out on this, Julie, we have to present the candidates to the school board and then they basically take it from there. Now, as, as far as we are concerned, how little we do or how much we do is basically our choice.
Correct. Yeah, what level of input you want to give to the school board, whether they choose to take it or leave it, is up to you. You can simply make a statement that we've heard from X number of people, they're Chester residents and qualified or eligible, whatever you wanna say that, and send them on. You can meet with them and, I mean, nothing really qualifies for executive session, certainly. But, you know, you can have them come in and explain why they're interested, I mean, whatever level you guys choose is up to you. We have three so far, there is an ad out, so, you know, no decision on anything could be made tonight anyway. But just to know what process you, you want to follow. Their board is going to be making an appointment on their next meeting, which is the 16th.
Which is the day after our next meeting.
Which is the day after our meeting, so.
So will, is this to fill the unexpired term?
This is to fill the unexpired term, this is, this is only through March, where they would have, that have to run for the unexpired term.
Okay.
Amy?
Yes, Heather?
I, I think it might not be a bad idea to just ask them to come in, so, to introduce themselves and, you know, just answer a couple of questions, not a heavy-duty interview, but, you know, just why would they wanna do it, you know, preliminary stuff, of course, not in an executive session. But I think that might be worth a while on the next agenda to just take a few minutes to talk to them.
Kind of maybe just like an introduction for the community, so the community could see who these people are. And we could have a small conversation with them and then, you know, make our recommendation. As far as the recommendation goes, I would, well, we could decide when we get closer to that meeting and what goes on. But I would just, would, I think it would be more, yes, these candidates are all acceptable and send them on their way and let them, you know, go through the process at the high school, at that board there. So if everybody's okay with it, the consensus, I would think, would be that we have the candidates come to our next meeting, just introduce themselves, introduce themselves to the public, have a small discussion or talk with them, and then, you know, go from there.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Do we need a motion? I mean, this is just to set up the process, so.
Absolutely, no, once we know everybody that's interested, there is an ad out. So once we know everybody that's interested, I'll notify everybody and just ask them to come to the next meeting and and just discuss about what their interests are, about why they wanna serve on the board.
Is there a deadline for people to show interest?
I, Sean, do you know what the deadline is from the, in the paper? I didn't see the article, Sean had emailed me earlier today.
I don't know.
Let me see if his email tells me, I don't know, I'm not sure. It certainly is gonna be before the 15th, because they're being appointed by the board on the 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Let me see if, I can see if his email will, tells me.
I mean, and the three candidates at this point are Katie Murphy, Ben Whalen and Jeff Hans.
That's right.
Three people interested in that position at this point right now. Want me to wait on that?
No, you're good.
No. I, I imagine the deadline's gotta be coming up, they can't have that.
It is, but I will, I will find out what it is and we'll make sure we don't do anything before that.
Because it was a timeframe for the school board also, they had a 30 days, or once we were notified, it was a 30-day time clock that goes on.
Correct.
Before we have to do what we have to do.
Okay.
But that, yeah, that makes sense. You know, it'd be a good introduction for the candidates to the community, because it is a Chester seat. See why they rely a little bit on input from the Select Board, because you have a board of four different towns, but the position that's open is a Chester position, a Chester town position. So I think it's, it's helpful to have some input from the Chester community, you know, whether it's through the Select Board or just, you know, through people, maybe they'll get ahold of yous or talk to yous and stuff. That'll work out well.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Next item on our agenda is Andover Budget Assessment Review. I know we have some folks here visiting from Andover and welcome to our, to our meeting. Scott Kendall and Maddie Bowden? I remember, my memory these days is not the greatest. And there was Jean, I'm not gonna try his last name, he's your fire warden?
Padigus.
Padigus?
Padigus.
Padigus.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
They're here also to hear what's going on with us. I know we've, we've had this discussion quite a few times in the past. Usually it happens right before budget time, when we look at numbers and we see what the contributions are from Andover. We are kind of connected with Andover in a lot of ways. Fire, ambulance, recreation, dispatch, neighbors, towns, with a lot of common threads going through our lives and stuff.
School.
School, yeah. So Julie, can you help us out with this and just kind of give us a rundown? Everybody in their package has a lot of information with a lot of numbers and a lot of data on it regarding our relationship when it comes to those four specific areas. The fire, the ambulance, the recreation and the dispatch. So Julie?
So I just broke down for you, so that you, so that both you guys and Andover Board had all numbers of what it costs to run these departments, regardless of what avenue you take. And the other thing I gave you is, there has been, talked several times in my 17 years here, different ways of figuring this number. So I gave it to you three different ways that we have used in the past. We have broken it down by grand list, we have broken it down per capita, we have broken it down per parcel over the past years. And you current, you have the numbers that we are currently charging, Andover, as, at this time, and those numbers have not increased for a few years. I have also spoken with Matt, our fire chief, and remember discussions in past years about, this is not typically the way that towns contract with other towns when it comes to emergency services. So I have spoken with a couple of towns on, kind of, how do they come up with that number? What does that contract look like? Springfield, Russ Thompson did, they contract with, or Baltimore contracts with them. Russ had kind of said, I don't know if it's comparable, you know, Baltimore, they have like two calls. So he said it's, it's, you know, it's not a good, good scenario. I'm waiting to hear back from Northshire, and then there is another town up north that's a little more, I think, realistic with how they contract, they do a flat fee and a per call. So, but I want, right, but I wanna talk to those chiefs, both on vacation. One isn't back till next Tuesday, one's not back till next Thursday. So I wanna talk to them and kind of see if what we're doing is right, if what we're doing is, is fair for Andover or for Chester, you know, what does this, you know, how are other towns doing it, what's really the protocol? When I mention this process, they're like, oh, no, we don't do it that way. So there's definitely a different way to be looking at this.
So when you say, when you mention the process, is that those three examples that you gave us? Whether it's by capita, by grand list?
Right, right, they don't do it that way.
Nobody does it by any of those three.
They don't do it by, no, they don't do it that way.
Those three actually give you three different, totally different numbers.
They give you three different numbers, correct, they give you three different numbers.
So the, the hard part's gonna be finding what's fair and equitable
Correct.
to both towns to come up with a system that makes sense.
Northshire is who I really wanna talk to, Northshire Rescue. They, they handle Manchester, but they also contract with five other towns of very different sizes. So they've got some kind of a formula, and they do a flat fee and a per call. So I'd love to know from them, what generates your flat fee? Because you're also doing a per call, so what does that look like? I'd really like to talk to them before you make any decisions on anything, like get a really good understanding to make sure that what we're doing is really the right way to be doing it for both towns involved.
In my opinion, it's, it's gotta be a simpler way.
Exactly.
Than the way, I mean, 'cause like you said, those three formulas are just so firepower.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, we've, I was fire chief for six years and we, we went through the whole thing back then too. And so I don't, I don't know who came up with the formula idea or how it works, but, you know, I just think it could be simpler for everybody.
And we don't, technically, there's not a written contract in place, which is an issue for both towns involved.
So we just assess a fee to Andover?
Correct, there's no, we have no contract.
Nothing in writing, nothing?
No, 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 no.
Maddie, sure, microphone?
I think what Matt Wilson gave us, information that he gave us is very valuable.
Yeah.
Gathering all this information and all this data is gonna help, I think, everybody involved make a decision that makes sense. Go ahead, Maddie.
So just a little history about the payment for fire services or whatever you wanna call it. For most of the time that I've lived in Andover, which is 27 years, Andover didn't contribute anything to Chester, because, well, it didn't contribute anything to Chester. Obviously, the town of Chester and the Chester Fire Department said, that's not fair, we want something, and there were negotiations between both towns. The negotiations went on for long enough that it took up, that it, it was discussed at several town meetings. So it, the negotiations went on for more than a year. I'm not surprised that there's not a contract. I don't see this myself as Andover contracting services from Chester. It's more of, we rely on other towns for these services and Chester is the primary provider. Therefore, we were giving some sort of, in recognition of that. That's why there's no contract. I can tell you, I remember those discussions at town meeting. Our Select Board at the time, I was not on it, was 100% in favor of giving money to Chester for emergency services. And there was a lot of pushback from the town. One thing about Andover is that some people live very close to Weston, some people live very close to Ludlow, some people live near Wyndham and some people live near Chester. You might be surprised at how vocal the people who live near other towns are. There's a lot of people in Chester who feel, or in Andover, who feel very connected to Chester, because their kids go to school here, et cetera, et cetera, but there are people... But there are people who don't feel any connection to Chester and they're very vocal. And I remember that conversation at our town meeting where people were saying, I hope the Chester Fire Department doesn't come if my house burns down. I live like a mile from the Weston Fire Station. Like I don't want Chester to come. I want my house to be saved. So I'm already thinking ahead of our, our residents and what they'll say. And also to say, yeah, there's no contract because that wasn't, it wasn't that Andover was contracting Chester services. And I had a third point that I forgot, so I'll just be quiet.
If I, if I could clarify something, like I said, I was fire chief for six years. The way it works, if you have a fire and even if it's close to Weston, Chester Fire Department may be the first ones toned, but they have running carriage set up so that the next trucks will automatically be toned. So Weston or Londonary may get there ahead of us, but it's, it goes through our dispatch and we are responding. So that, that's called mutual aid. But, you know, it's not, you don't sit there and wait for Chester to get on scene and then have them call Weston. It doesn't work that way.
I'm so glad you said that because that reminded me of the third thing I was gonna say that came out of this discussion at the Andover Town Meeting. This was probably 10 years ago. Nicholas Trask, who's a volunteer at the Chester Fire Department, stood up and explained to everyone how it works. And I think he was really instrumental in winning the townspeople over to agreeing to give Chester Fire Department money.
Well, and I think it's important that you guys know, first of all, I think every town has to be affiliated with a mutual aid service.
Right.
Contracted with a mutual aid service.
Probably because of insurance.
Because of insurance for your residents, you have to be contracted with a mutual aid if you do not have a service.
Well, I don't know what hap, what, I am honestly completely ignorant of the current situation, but I know that when we first bought our house in Andover 27 years ago and got homeowner's insurance, there were very few companies that would cover us and we had to pay extra because we were so far from any fire department.
Correct. And then if you, there, it's your ISO ratings. So you need to be, even if it's not Chester, you need to be contracted with a mutual aid service because you don't have your own service. So just so you guys know for your insurance ratings for your residents, a lot of the phone calls that Matt feels from insurance companies, when somebody buys a property, that's what they're doing. They're calling Chester and they're saying, what is your response time? What is your, and if we say, we don't cover them.
Yeah, and they, they want to know what kind of equipment you got. What, how much water you got on wheels and all that stuff? That, that affects your insurance rating.
So whoever you use, whether it's Chester, whether it's Weston, whether it's Wyndham, whoever, you, you do need to be contracted with a mutual aid service.
And that, that could be a good selling point for citizens in your town regarding your insurance rates. To make that contract, like Julie was saying, with us, with somebody else or whatever, yeah.
I, I'm not sure if it will help with the insurance rates if in, as in my case, it was the distance to the fire department, but certainly the necess, I mean, where the necessity to contract with a fire department. This is new and certainly if it came up, you know, 10 years ago at town meeting when I was not on the select board, it's not something I remember. But I do remember the conversation that, a little of the conversation that happened. So I just wanted to fill some of that in.
Yeah, that's helpful, thanks, Maddie.
Thanks.
It comes up every year with us when it's budget time.
Yep.
Because we look at these numbers and I realize, you know, that it's a piece of change for a small town, but when you look at it, 2017 all the way up to 2021, it hasn't changed.
Yeah.
At all. It hasn't gone up at all.
Arnie?
Yeah, go ahead.
My recollection is within the time that I've been on the board, we had meetings and there was a long period of time that there was no increase. And then we talked to the chair, I believe, of the board and we were going to increase it every year, but then we haven't. So for years and years and years, it wasn't increased. And, and perhaps that, you know, I thought there was a contract and a mutual agreement, but I'm sorry to hear that there wasn't.
Also, trying to make it clear for some people that it's, it's like a utility, the fire department. You have to pay to maintain it. It has to be a certain, you know, you maintain the equipment, maintain the training and all that. I mean, it's like water and sewer. I can relate to that, okay? You, if somebody wants, wants water and sewer, they want to, when they turn on the faucet, they want water to come out. And you've got to be able to have the infrastructure in place. So when you dial the fire department, somebody's gonna respond. So you have a cost just maintaining the infrastructure. So that's, that's the way I look at it. It's like we have base rates for water and sewer, whether you're here year round or not. That's what you pay.
Well, and Jeff, you reminded me of something I needed or wanted to say too, is although the way we decided to charge or negotiate with Andover years ago, I am not certain how we got there, but I'm fine to look at a new way if it's simpler. But hopefully we can come to something that Chester feels is equitable and so does Andover.
Well, it sounds like Julie's got a little more work to do as far as gathering some more information and some data from some other towns that have addressed this issue already and how they do it. It seems like the examples that we have aren't exactly the way anybody does it.
Yeah.
So hopefully we can come up to, with an answer that makes sense for everybody involved and it works for everybody involved. And then maybe we don't have to have this discussion every year. Everybody will know how it works and what goes, how it goes forward and stuff. And hopefully Andover still stays connected with Chester somehow. Anybody else have any other comments or questions or concerns on this topic?
And as I'm doing research, is there something specific, thoughts that you guys have that you'd like me to be researching or asking questions about as I'm researching?
That's a good point.
From your perspective, that way I can get it all together.
The Andover Select Board hasn't discussed this together at all. I should have said that before I started speaking. I wasn't talking as a select board person, just somebody who was at a town meeting 10 years ago.
Yeah.
I think that we would like to discuss it at our next meeting and get in touch with you.
Okay, so let me know if there's other things that as I'm talking to these people next week or whatever, you know, if you have other things, it's like, do they do this? Do they do that? I'm happy to ask.
Great.
Or maybe you want to do your own research, that's up to you, but I'm happy to.
I think the only issue was, was when you send that email to us. I mean, that was, if you run the numbers, they were
Oh, they're huge.
They were huge.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, absolutely huge. And like I said to Jeff earlier, you know, if I plow a driveway for 40 bucks and then the next year I plow it for 80, you're gonna tell me to get bent, basically. And that's basically the fear that we're having is, you know, you guys got a new building and that charge is coming to us. You know what I mean?
No matter, no matter what you think about the new building, that, that has been needed for 15 years anyway.
And I know there's big costs on running this stuff and they're gonna go up every year. I get that, but it's the jump, you know, are you, if you double it, that's a, that's a big jump.
It might be helpful if, when you guys discuss it, if you come up with a figure that you guys are comfortable with so we can have a starting point.
Yeah.
And I'll, and I'll, you know, be talking about the contract piece, but this is the reason I put these numbers this way, Scott, so people could see like, the way we're doing it doesn't really seem to make a whole lot of sense when you start looking at these figures.
Like I said, when you look at those numbers, I'm going, yeah.
Which is also why I had Matt.
For how many calls did we have? 20 or whatever?
Which is also why we had Matt.
But they change every year. You may, you may have, I mean, we get the numbers here. You may have 20 this year and 35 next year or 40 next year.
Service that's available 24/7.
And it's not the amount of calls. Sometimes those calls that last a week for a missing person or something make a big difference.
But this is what prompted, these numbers is what prompted, let's look at some other ways. And there are other towns, most other towns do it differently. So let's start doing some research on that, yeah.
Heather, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I'd just like the speaker to say his name and
Scott Kendall from the Andover Select Board. That was Scott Kendall that was just speaking from the Andover Select Board, Heather, sorry. I think she got it.
I think she heard you, yeah.
Yep. Anything else, any further discussion? Well, thank you guys for coming to our meeting. It's, you know, it's always good.
I'll let you know when I have everything and we're gonna talk again. I'll just, I'll email Jeanette and
Yeah, I think it's important for neighboring towns to communicate and work together, so.
Well, and I just want to say another thing. It's nice to have those numbers, Julie, because there are huge operation costs and capital costs. And it's good that we know how much it is.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
All right. Thanks for everyone on that topic. The next item on our agenda is, well, it's the Highway Garage contract, but that's not, it's not finalized yet.
No, I just got the revisions back from Jim this afternoon. I haven't had a chance to like really sift through them. He had some questions he needed answered, so it's not ready for tonight.
So we might necessitate a special meeting just to keep this project on track, possibly in the next week or so before our
They're moving before it snows.
Yes. They are gonna be starting. I have Kirby and I, Kirby and I will be having a meeting with them anyways. There is, now that fire and ambulance is out for the most part, which is really part of the big crunch of just, we had to get in. Now that they are out, Russell is gonna be coming in regardless of the contract. They're, they're gonna be coming in and doing some preliminary stuff anyway to keep things moving, so.
All right. Next item is VLCT is having their annual business meeting. And it's Wednesday, September 29th at 1:00 PM. In person's gonna be in South Burlington, is that correct?
Yes, yep.
And they also have a online virtual part. And I guess Julie, you'll be there because you're
I'll be there for the board, yep.
For the board, but what we're looking for is a volunteer possibly to be a voting member for Chester?
Every year you guys do a voting delegate. You, you delegate a voting, I'm not saying it right. You delegate somebody to be
A delegate.
The delegate, yeah, I am saying it right, okay. Tripping over myself, yeah. I think Heather's done it in the past for a few years. This year it can be done virtually.
Heather, you've done it in the past?
I've done it two, three years. I'm more than happy to do it, but I'd be doing it through Zoom.
Which you can
If you guys want to, if someone wants to go, I'm more than happy to have someone else go too. Whatever you like.
Well, thanks for the offer, Heather. Is there anyone that would like to go in person? I mean, Heather says she'll take it up if nobody decides that they want to do it.
I would take it, I have a conflict on that date. I would not be able to, to attend either way.
I'm happy for Heather to go.
Thank you, Heather.
Heather, it seems like you're getting a bunch of thank yous for volunteering to do the VLCT meeting. And it seems, I don't know, I guess it's appropriate. You have the experience on it too.
Oh, well, there's, yeah, okay, good.
I'll set you up, Heather.
All right, well, if it makes everyone happy, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you, Heather.
You may need a motion.
Well, then I don't vote on
Don't vote on it.
Okay, I won't vote.
Motion to appoint Heather Chase as our voting delegate to the VLCT Board Annual Business Meeting on Wednesday, September 29th at 1:00 PM.
So moved, as read.
Jeff's a motion and Lee and Lee are both seconds. Any further discussion on this?
Nope.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? No?
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Thanks for having the confidence in me.
Thank you, Heather.
Errors and omissions, where'd I lose it? Oh, it was regarding the tiny house?
Yes, the original. Arnie, it's the original.
So this is just housekeeping?
It is housekeeping and I know that probably you guys are feeling like, how many of these are we gonna do? We've done more this year than we normally have. The state has had a pretty tremendous backlog. Most of these have to do with land use issues. They're kind of coming in. There were some changes, you know, we, we Wanda retired this year. We left Val, we brought in Nemrick. So there were, there were some, a little bit of struggles in making that change. But I believe this is kind of the end.
Reassessment?
The reassessment, there's a couple of things trickling still from the reassessment. So there's a lot of pieces to it, but
Growing pains are okay.
Correct.
So I thought we did this one last meeting.
You didn't do that one, no.
I thought we did also.
Similar though.
We didn't sign it, but we discussed it, I think.
Okay.
So, okay.
Two meetings ago, excellent, 'cause I was here.
I bet.
All set with that?
Yes.
New business future agenda items. I guess you got dog ordinance for September 15th?
I'm hoping, I don't know if I'm gonna get there to be honest with you, but we'll try. The, the garage will be on, if not earlier. And then you just said that you wanted to have the candidates on.
Yeah, the three candidates, or two, or whatever it ends up being.
Whatever it ends up being, yeah.
Also, Heather, could we have an up, I mean, not Heather, I'm sorry, Julie. Could we have an update on our, oh, our the, the issues that we're having with Route 10 and
The speed study stuff?
Well, the speed study on the Andover Road, I'd love to have an update on that. But also the places that have
Junkyard ordinance?
Have trash heaps in there.
Oh, yes.
And also on, you know, the place on 103 South that has trailers and cars and
Yeah, I know Preston is working on some things, so yes, I will get you an update, yep.
Thanks, Julie.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yeah, actually I have something. My wife and I went to Rockport, Mass over the weekend and we went into town for dinner and could not find a place to park. And it made me think about Chester and our situation where we're trying to attract more business into the green and to the Village Center. And I can see us facing a similar problem in a few years if we aren't already there. And something that prompted me to think of this was something that Scott Blair mentioned at our last meeting relative to parking and all that. So I think it should be a discussion that we have as a board to figure out how we deal with this problem. Because I can't tell you how frustrating it was to drive around and around and around and not be able to find a place to park and then finally finding someplace that was barely legal and having to walk into town. I mean, I didn't feel like it was dangerous or anything, but if it had been raining or bad weather, it would have been annoying, to say the least. So it just made me think about how do we treat those people that we're encouraging to come to town if we don't have proper accommodations for them?
Okay.
Good point. I don't know if there's anything in the master plan regarding that.
No, not really, but
It was identified as an issue.
There are some towns that are, I've heard that are doing municipal parking plans. And maybe that's something we look at. I don't know who you bring in or how that's done, but we, it's certainly something to look at.
We do have, it'd be a good topic to figure, to talk about because we do have properties around.
We don't have any projections on additional parking needs, do we? I mean, you know, that's
No, but I would imagine that a parking plan probably takes that into consideration. I mean, maybe that's something to look at. I, I've never done anything, but I have heard of it. I know, I do know some towns in the area that are doing it.
Well, it'd be a good idea to analyze it and take a look and see what, see what
I'll talk to regional planning about it and see, yeah.
Great.
Good idea.
Anything else? Must be right on time here for you, Heather.
That's right, thank you.
For Julie. Next item, number 11.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Lee is the motion. Jeff is the second. Any discussion?
The only thing is if Scott Kendall had stayed, this might have been a shorter meeting than last time.